I'd like to call the Planning Commission for the Town of McCannus to order. The first item on the agenda is reorganization, which we do every January. Uh, we elect officers. Uh, I think we just have a chairman and a vice chair. Is that correct?
Uh, you know what? This is my first rodeo in January.
I think that's correct. Who is the vice chair right at the moment?
Rob.
I am.
Rob, okay.
So.
Must've missed the meeting, I think, is how I got it. Who's not here tonight? That's why everybody's here tonight.
I think so. Well, yeah, uh. If there is a, well, I guess we open for nominations first and then go from there. Normally, where, where did, uh, RJ go? You still around?
I'm here.
Okay. Usually you would take over at this point and call for nominations. Where we go.
All right, well then, that's what I'll do. Are we doing chair first?
We can do chair first. Sure.
Mr. Attorney, do you have a preference?
I would start with the chair, yes.
All right, then I'll take nominations for the chair.
I'd nominate Ted Minor.
I would second that nomination.
Okay, and do we typically do a voice or a roll call vote for this?
Just a voice vote, just fine. Unless there are.
All right, well, in that case.
Are there any other nominations? And I think you have to close the nominations thing. I don't know, Steve's the expert probably, but.
Yeah. You're doing a great job, Rob. You're doing a good job. That's how it goes.
Yeah, technically you should do that, yeah. Technically, motion to close nominations and then, since there's only one candidate, a voice vote would suffice. If there are ever more than one, if there's ever more than one candidate, I would do a roll call. You would vote by the name of the individual you're supporting.
All right, I'll make a motion to close nominations.
And I'll second that.
Okay, and, uh, voice vote, all in favor of Mr. Minor as the chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Motion carries. It is all yours again, sir.
Like to make a motion to nominate Rob Gartner for vice chair.
Seconded.
This meeting. I think Lamar said, if I heard it right.
What's that? Yeah.
Lamar seconded, I think.
I did.
All right.
Lamar, why does it look like you're at a bar? Not fair at all. Whatever you have as a background.
I'm in the basement, doesn't look nice, and people are coming up and down the steps.
And, uh, like you're.
I can't see him at all.
Nearly as bad as Greg looks decapitated.
Yeah, he, he looks. We can see your head and nothing else.
Floating in space.
And a little, uh. Lamp above your.
Yeah.
Shoulder.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know what to do, but I guess.
No, no, it's, it's fine. It's just, you know.
It's the brightest passage to be hassled.
Very artistic.
Unless they're in TV studios.
Telling scary stories or something, I don't know.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, I would move that the nominations be closed.
I'll second that.
Oh. You're supposed to be running this chair, RJ, excuse me.
Am I? I thought you were supposed to be running it now.
You know, it's you now, Ted. It's all you, man.
All me now, okay.
All you.
In favor.
Aye.
The nomination. Okay, all right, I guess we're done.
Aye. Thank you for your votes.
Absolutely. I think this is my last year on this planning commission, so it's, it's nice to be chair for the last year. Um. The next item on the agenda is the Sisters of Divine Providence New Residential Facility Land Development Review. Uh, first is the Planning Commission accepts the simple subdivision land development application as of January 5th, 2021.
Isn't that a doozy to read that date?
Pardon?
I said, isn't that a doozy to read that date? It's official now.
2021.
Oh, my.
Earned it.
Never thought I'd get here.
So. Oh, go ahead.
Can we have a, uh, a, 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 a motion to, uh, accept that, uh, simple subdivision?
I have a question, if I may, first. What is the purpose of carving those eight acres out of the total tract?
I had the same question.
Well, so, um, let's, that will all be discussed during the developer's presentation. Uh, I, I think the two second answer is they would eventually like to potentially market that parcel. Um, but that is not, none of those plans is part of this.
Okay.
All right.
Does it, does that need to be seconded?
Did we have a, did we have a motion?
You know, I'm not sure that we've been doing motions for these regularly, just because I've, I've included it on the agenda because, uh, in the code, there's, there's a stipulation that says essentially the application clock doesn't officially start until the next planning commission meeting, at which point it is officially accepted. Um, so I kind of just do that for good measure, but Mr. Corble, if you have any recommendations that we should do a motion, we'll start.
It wouldn't hurt.
All right, then you know what? We'll start doing it.
Makes it more official in, in my view with the clock.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve to accept, motion to accept.
This is just to accept the application to start the clock, is all this is.
Correct.
Right.
Lamar, you made the motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
Motion to accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Suppose? Okay. Next, the next part is the developer presentation.
All right. Uh, so I, I see at least one person that I know is supposed to be on here and I'm gonna rely on him to, uh, make sure we pick the right people and to put on camera here. So, all right, Tim, you are live.
Good evening, everyone, and I, unfortunately, I was hoping that you were going to approve the plan with help faster for motions to approve. Um, anyway, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I mean, this is Tim Hamp. I am a senior project manager with Dirk and Edson. Uh, we are a planning and design firm, uh, located, um, in Lititz, Pennsylvania. Also with me tonight, um, somewhere within the virtual Zoom world is Jim Wanger. Uh, he is the principal, uh, with Dirk and Edson and, and also the principal responsible for the project. Um, our firm is, is presenting to you tonight on behalf of the Sisters of Divine Providence. Uh, the sisters reside on a 51 acre Providence Heights campus located at 9,000 Babcock Boulevard in Allison Park. And the current application consists of two parts, a preliminary final simple subdivision plan as well as a land development plan for a new residential and healthcare facility. Uh, tonight, you know, being that this is our first appearance, uh, before the planning commission, uh, we initially like to give a brief overview of the proposed application, the scope of work. Uh, we'd also like to discuss a couple of specific comments that, uh, uh, in the comments review letter. And at the end, of course, we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And I'm gonna start sharing my screen and if at any point you can't see my screen or you're having trouble hearing me, please just, uh, please let me know.
I can't see the screen.
I haven't shared yet.
There we go.
That looks like a nice place to build a convent.
That is not Allison Park.
No. Isn't that, isn't that the little pond in front of the?
That is not what that is. That is not.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought for once I was actually working in a community where I didn't have to run a pool.
This is the detention pond right here.
Wow.
If that helps, we'll make that happen then. All right. So for the simple subdivision part of the application, uh, the sisters are pursuing, um, the ability to subdivide and parcel off a portion of their campus at the northeast corner of their lot. And if you can see my cursor, I'm highlighting right now that they are, um, proposing to be able to subdivide. Uh, the overall campus as a whole right now is 51.32 acres and is known as institutional. And then as part of the subdivision proposal, parcel two, which will be the smaller of the two, uh, remnant parcels, uh, will end up being, uh, just over eight acres at 8.02 acres. And then the remaining parcel one, which will be the larger of the two, uh, that will be 43.3 acres. Um, and at this time, you know, we are assuming and planning that both of those parcels will remain institutional for the time being. Um, all, as part of the, the plan and the submission package, all of the bulk requirements, uh, for each of the proposed parcels were provided on the plan and demonstrate conformance to the district requirements. And to go back to the question that was asked, um, at the beginning of the meeting regarding future intentions, uh, there are no set plans as far as what to do e- exactly with that parcel, um, as RJ alluded to, uh, correctly. At this point, the sisters just want to be able to have that in position to potentially market. Uh, but right now there are no official plans, uh, for how that, uh, parcel will be, uh, either sold or developed, um, in the future. That's still to be determined.
So that has no real, there's no correlation or connection between the, the overall site element in the subdivision. I mean, these could be done at two separate times.
It could be done at two separate times. Uh, we just wanted, because of the opportunity to use the simple subdivision plan, uh, we wanted to take the opportunity since we were coming in for the overall site developments in the heart of campus. Uh, we figured that we would, uh, take that opportunity to apply for both the lane development as well as the subdivision, but you are correct, it doesn't mean it has to happen at the same time.
Okay, just, just checking to make sure I was on the right page. Thank you.
And then as far as the scope of work for the proposed land development, uh, the sisters are proposing a new residence that is going to be located at the heart of the campus behind, uh, the main mother house of the provincial house. Uh, so the area I'm highlighting here, um, with my cursor, the darker blue building, that is the proposed new residential facility that, uh, we're here for tonight. Um, that building.
Could, could you explain what you mean by a residential facility? Who is it for?
It's for the sisters. So right now, the sisters currently reside, uh, within the main provincial house as well as, um, in parts of St. Joseph's Center. And there are, it's not shown in this plan, but there are some smaller detached, um, homes or houses that are, uh, across this alleyway behind St. Joseph's Center. That's where they live currently. And the proposed plan is to vacate those and to construct a new residential and healthcare facility at this location that's shown in the darker blue.
What happens to their existing places? I mean, I know, I saw you, your demo of the standalone, um, residential places, but what happens then in a provincial house?
I was hoping to address that a little bit later in the presentation, if that's okay. I just.
Okay, that's fine.
Uh, certainly, I do plan to address that.
Okay.
That is, that is part of what we're gonna, gonna speak to, especially related to, uh, some of the comments with traffic and parking, just so you can understand some of the strategy and the, and the thinking behind that.
Okay.
So as far as the new propo, new building, uh, the overall, uh, proposal is for, uh, about 68,000 square feet of new construction. Uh, that's gonna be amongst three full stories above grade as well as on the eastern wing. Uh, because of the way that the site is set up, the grades fall from the provincial house on the western side to the east. So as we move over to the east and towards the wooded area, the grade falls off and gets lower there. So that actually provides an opportunity for a small section of that east wing, right where I'm circling my cursor now, uh, to have an exposed part of that building. So there's, there's a, a small 1,800 square foot, uh, piece of that wing that is also a part of the building complex at the lower level. Uh, but it's not a full level, just, just partial. Uh, within the building, uh, there is going to be, uh, eighty-three beds and that is intended to be a mix between a single bedrooms or a single units, um, also, uh, single bedroom apartments. Nine independent living units. And then also, uh, within the building, there is allocation for 24 healthcare beds. And we've turned it that way, which really allows the sisters flexibility for, uh, to be able to use them, whether it's for assisted care or, uh, more in-depth skilled nursing, depending on their congregation's needs. Um, I will note that the eighty-three total beds that are proposed in the new building is a reduction from the 100 that are currently online between the provincial house, St. Joseph's Center and the existing residences that are, um, on the site currently. Um, the new building, if I zoom in here, uh, you'll see that there is a connection to the existing current spirituality center. Uh, this little segment of the building here, that is just a one-story connection on the ground level. Uh, and I have an elevation view that can illustrate that more, but that piece is only connected at one, at one level. And there are no renovations planned for Kearns other than anything that's necessary for the construction tie-in. But other than that, uh, the actual existing Kearns building will remain the same as is. Uh, so as you can see from the proposed plan, the building configuration is, um, either, say it's either a, a kind of a cross or a T shape, uh, with the main central core area where I'm circling now, and then three residential wings that extend to the west, to the east and to the south. And I know that as part of our application and submission package, we did provide residential view or views of the, the building. Um, I'll pull them up briefly just again to highlight just the overall aesthetics and design of the building and the overall massing. Um, I'll highlight, you know, in particular this south view. I'll point out in a second our new entrance drive and approach of the facility, but this gives a sense of the view as we're gonna approach, uh, the building, uh, from the south to the right here will be the, is the eastern wing. Uh, this portion here in the middle is the south wing that's extending from the core towards us. And then to the left is the west wing, which reaches out, um, over back towards the mother house. Um, and so the main entry will be over here in this, off of this western portion of the building with the staff entrance over on the, off the western. I will also, I will also point out on this plan, uh, a different view, which starts to also illustrate what I mentioned before about that portion of the east wing that has a, a slight, um, exposed basement area for that lower level. So, uh, just to kind of help you visualize how that works off of that east wing.
What are the materials on the building?
Yeah, I was gonna say, what's the materials? Cause I really can't tell what this is.
Um, so we do have, if I zoom here a little bit closer, you can kind of get the, uh, the sense that there might be some type of stone material, uh, either some siding or some type of cladding. Um, so it, it won't necessarily be, um, all masonry or all brick, uh, like the residents, um, over at the, uh, the mother house. But, uh, some of the detailing, uh, for the articulation of the building as well as some of the materials will at least complement that existing facility.
What, what cut? Go ahead, I was gonna say, what kind of siding you talking about? Vinyl, hardy?
I, I think it, it's not been finalized. We're still in the process of developing construction, but I, I believe at this point, um, it, the hardy is under consideration for some of those materials.
Do we have a preference?
Uh, I mean, we've been, all the projects we've been doing recently have all been using the hardy board as the finish product on the outside for durability and long-lasting and the looks that it gives you.
Okay, is that something, Tim, is that something that you may be able to take back as a preference?
I can certainly communicate that to the sisters and the design team, uh, and note that, um, as I said, we're, we're in, not, we're in the process of finalizing uh, bid documents, so, uh, there is opportunity to at least share the recommendation of the planning commission and, uh, we can see where it goes from there. Obviously can't promise that that's what they'll decide, but certainly we'll share that with them.
Yeah, just.
What's the?
I'm just gonna jump in real quick here, just so, you know, it's, it's, we're all on the same page. This is not one of the districts, as far as I know, that have any architectural standards for the materials. Um, so definitely good information, but, you know, just so, we're all.
Yeah, it's a, it's a preference, not something we're asking to stick.
Understood.
What, what is the material on the Kearns Center?
Uh, Kearns has, I, I remember quickly, it's got brick masonry is, is a lot of the main building material, uh, so it's not gonna necessarily match Kearns exactly. Uh, there will be a bit of a difference. Uh, but again, some of the articulation, uh, between the mother house and Kearns, uh, whether it's some of the shapes or features of the roof lines or other, other, uh, parts like that, uh, we're gonna try to incorporate some details the best we can. So, again, as we're looking at it as a, as an integral campus with multiple buildings, facilities, that there is some sort of visual connection that ties them together, but, uh, we are not trying to match the the yellowish brick that is, uh, part of that existing building.
What is the roofing material?
I, I'll be honest, yeah, I, I'm not the architect of the projects. I, I, I don't know exactly. I could guess it just might just be an awful shingle roof, but I, I, I don't know for sure.
Well, normally when we get these presentations, we have a, a, a board that shows us what the finished materials are, colors, things like that, so I would be interested in, like, would like to see that, just so we understand what this thing looks like.
Okay, well, we can certainly provide more details as far as the materials and the overall aesthetics, um, if that is requested by the commission for the next time we appear.
Okay.
Who are, who are the architects for this building, by the way?
It, it is Dirk and Edson. It's just that myself, I, I am not a, uh, registered architect. I'm a registered chief architect. So I'm speaking on behalf more from the site plan, not as the main building designer.
All right, I thought maybe there was somebody else. Okay.
All right, I'm gonna flip over to a different graphic here. Um, I do want to highlight a few of the proposed site design features, uh, that are associated with the project. From an overall circulation standpoint, uh, we do plan to still maintain and utilize the, uh, egress, uh, the entrances and the exits that are off of, uh, Babcock Boulevard. And then our proposed project area, if I zoom in a little bit closer on the next graphic, will better highlight the actual proposed improvements, uh, within the scope of work here. So the area that is colored a little bit of the darker green, that really, uh, encompasses the area that, uh, will be, uh, part of the overall project scope. Um, as you can see, tying into, uh, the existing driveway that comes up from Babcock, we are creating a new driveway approach to our proposed residence that will lead into an arrival parking courtyard and a drop-off area at our main entrance, um, that's located in that southeast quadrant of the boroughs. Will be a canopy here and it'll be an opportunity for cars to come in to drop off and either park, uh, for, you know, limited parking here for some visitors or to be able to go out into the other parking areas, uh, that are available around the project sites. Um, beyond the entrance drive, uh, we also do have, uh, proposed parking areas associated here. So everything that you're seeing with parking stalls in dark gray, not only to the south of the project here, but also a new expanded parking lot that is to the east, or sorry, to the west of Kearns Spirituality Center. Uh, that is all shown to be reconstructed because, uh, the, with, with the rating and earthwork that's required with the project, uh, much of the existing parking that's out on the site now, uh, will need to be, um, demolished to be able to accommodate the earthwork needed to for the new building. So, uh, this is all shown as, for the most part, new parking lot construction.
So what is the, what is the number of spots existing versus the number of spots this plan shows?
Sure, within the project area, let me just click over here for a second, off screen here. There would be one second. So as was noted in our, uh, submission package, uh, existing within, the way that we, uh, addressed it in the application and our drawings, within the project limit line, uh, we had accounted for and counted 186 existing parking spaces total. And then there would be 179 spaces that would be demolished as part of the proposed project. And then we would reconstruct, um, 181 spaces that allows us, uh, a, a net gain of two in a, in a grand total of 188 spaces. And again, addressing the parking specifically, I was hoping to do that just a little bit later in the presentation, but you can certainly.
Okay.
Maybe we could let you finish the presentation and you might answer a lot of these questions and we could kind of maybe save them to the end of the presentation.
That, that would be fine with me. That's, that's how we have, uh, outlined the presentation. So that's fine with everybody else. I'll continue that way.
Okay.
So in addition to the parking areas that are shown on the plan, a few other features, I'll just highlight, um, as far as other vehicular circulation components, uh, we do provide a driveway access down from our new entrance drive down to connect to the, uh, driveway that leads out to the existing cemetery, um, on the eastern part of the property. Uh, we do also have a loading dock area that is located in the northwest quadrant of our building. So this new drive access that not only connects to the new parking area that's adjacent to Kearns, that also allows the, uh, truck access to be able to, uh, be able to deliver to that loading dock and service the building as well. Uh, we have other exterior amenities as well. We have a dining terrace that's located on the north side of the building that spills out from the main dining room within the building. Uh, we also have garden spaces, uh, a, a large one in particular here in the southwest quadrant. This is a, uh, fenced and wellness garden, uh, to be able to support, uh, some of those, uh, uh, healthcare beds that are gonna be located within that, uh, ground floor of the south wing. Uh, we have a number of walkways, um, and other, uh, pathway connections that connect from the building out to other existing features on the campus. Uh, we also have, uh, as part of our infrastructure plan, we have a network of stormwater inlets, uh, pipes and over on the eastern side, that's also a compliment that we have a couple of rain gardens that also serve as our stormwater facilities for the project. With our application and submission, we provided a landscaping plan as well as site lighting that meets the minimum ordinance requirements. And public sewer and water connections are also proposed as part of the project. Um, I, I will note that, um, at this point, when we initially proposed and submitted to the town, we had noted one modification request, I mean, that was for section 137109 for trees. And that's for, uh, trying to prefer trees that are greater than six inch in diameter. And as was noted in our justification, um, the, a number of the trees within the existing parking lot and within the, kind of the heart of the project area, uh, because of the amount of earthwork and demolition that's required to construct these facilities, um, it's gonna be very difficult to preserve all of those. We are certainly gonna be doing our best to preserve as many of the existing trees as we can, uh, within the project area. Uh, there's also a large amount of existing vegetation throughout the campus and along the different, um, street frontages along Cumberland and Babcock. And as part of, and is demonstrated on our proposed landscape plan that was submitted, uh, there is a substantial amount of landscape that's also gonna be provided to meet just the, the minimum requirements, uh, that the town has in the ordinance for parking lots, building perimeter as well as, uh, buffering and screen for the property. So, uh, even though there will be some tree, there will, uh, there will be substantial pointing that we're adding or. That's already there now. Um, we are in recent, we have a comment letter from Gateway Engineers, uh, dated December 23rd. Um, our team has reviewed that and we've already begun to address some of those comments. Um, in fact, our engine, one of our engineers already had called all the staff members, um, this week to start talking through. And, uh, to be honest, you know, we are generally comfortable with the majority of the comments that are in there and anticipate that we're gonna be able to address and respond to those and include, you know, any required revisions or responses uh, in a follow-up submission, uh, we hope to have here in the next few weeks. Um, so, uh, my sense is that rather than go comment by comment, I think we probably would rather just speak to maybe a couple of the main or more substantial comments, uh, related to the application that we would wanna highlights. And as mentioned before, that's really, you know, mostly related to the parking and the traffic. Um, and I guess I'd first like to maybe give a little bit of background and context to our approach and where's, and where that, uh, kind of generates from as far as, you know, this application. We had assisted not only the sisters, but also LaRoche University with the planning process, uh, back in 2019 to resolve campus planning needs for both, uh, the individual campuses as well as a collaborative plan to see, you know, if there's an opportunity for them to share, um, and better utilize facilities together, um, for the long-term plans and, and needs. Um, the selected plan, you know, even though, you know, even prior to the COVID pandemic, um, really had a few key highlights, uh, the first being that, you know, the sisters would develop, um, and construct a new proposed residence as we've already talked about as part of that project. And as a result of that new residence, uh, that they would vacate their existing residence, um, in the, in the number of beds that they have within the provincial house, St. Joseph's Center and those residences. Uh, the existing office school, which is a tenant and within the north wing of the building, uh, the plan is, is that, you know, as far, as long as they also intend to stay there, that the sisters also are thinking that they would occupy a substantial portion of that north wing of the building for now. Um, I guess the university as well has a few of their own strategies that, you know, really do play into our overall approach for, uh, the proposed. you know, really do play into our overall approach for the proposed sisters project and the parking and the traffic. They had to deal with issues related to staff, no, sorry, not staff, office, administrative space, I mean, just overall space needs under campus. In fact, under campus, as many as you know, they have temporary trailers that are located in the back of their campus that are not ideal for their long term plan for the university. They're trying to get rid of those and move those uses and those either offices or classrooms back into true buildings under campus. So between that effort and also some of the off campus uses that they already have away from their main campus, they're trying to bring those back on onto campus as well. So as a result of that, you know, the having the space available in the south wing of the the mother house there, that provides an opportunity for LaRoche to be able to move in and be able to utilize some of that space for the university's need. We see that as a, as a real, you know, interesting opportunity for them to collaborate and to be able to utilize spaces in. There could be also some other benefits to the town, one being that with the university now consolidated back under campus, there would be less traffic generated between going from main campus down south down to the Rimball Building where they have their current admissions staff and actually other, other staff as well. But having all of them back on campus would eliminate some of those trips that they're, that they're seeing on a regular basis. Also having the sisters be able to either lease or, or in whatever capacity to be able to let the university utilize space with the provincial house and some of St. Joseph's Center. That gives the opportunity for the university to move some of their offices, administrative uses and more of the back of house stuff out of their main academic buildings and that allows them to utilize those for the classrooms and labs and more of those core academic facilities. You know, all this together, what it's really saying is that, you know, this is an opportunity for the sisters to really cooperate with the university to better utilize, you know, and create an integrated overall campus. Now, fast forward to our specific project with the sisters and looking at it from a traffic standpoint. You know, the sisters project that we have currently here, you know, the, the population on the campus is not intended to to change as part of this project. They're simply just moving from existing buildings to a new building. They're not going to change the population. In fact, their long term trends actually show that their numbers will continue to gradually decline. So for this project, that's not going to increase. And then again, if they're able to work with the university to be able to utilize and backfill some of the spaces that they vacate. Again, from a traffic standpoint, we could see that either there's no potential impact or increase of traffic, or it could even maybe reduce it depending how things play out with the university. From a parking standpoint, again, since there is no change anticipated in the sisters population, we approached this as far as this specific project that you know, the population not changing, the way that the sisters are operating their campuses and changing. So therefore the number of spaces that would be required for them with the new residents, we approached it just to simply replace what was going to be demolished and maintain or possibly increase in number a little bit. We do as part of our master plan from last year have provisions, and I'll pull this up here so you can see. Specifically in front of the mother house, opportunity to increase and expand and enhance parking for the mother house. When it becomes determined, you know, whether it's the university or some other user or use occupies that vacated space. The problem is, is that right now the sisters don't know for sure who that's going to be. I mean, certainly we've gone through planning efforts with the university to work through ideas as far as how they could use it, but that's not a set in stone thing. And then, you know, from years from now, we just don't know for sure who's actually going to occupy that. So the sisters approach and our, and our approach with them is that instead of trying to construct that parking now, you know, can we defer that until later until we know for sure who's going to be in there, what that uses and therefore what is that required parking that's going to be needed to go with that. And whether that requires, you know, coming back for an additional land development plan. I think that's fine, but just again, knowing that right now with the proposed project for the new residence, that additional parking really isn't going to serve them by just replacing what they have now. They'll be able to function as they currently are on the, on the campus with their current population. At this point, that is the end of my prepared presentation, but as I said at the beginning, I would be happy to answer any questions and go back to any of the graphics that we had pulled up and illustrated as part of the presentation.
Okay, any planning commission members have questions?
Yeah, I do. RJ, with regard to this, I didn't realize there's a potential redevelopment of the existing house, you know, maybe not on the books yet, but out there. Would that require, would that require them to come back to planning commission or how would we be able to ensure that whatever happens in those spaces does not overload the parking or impact traffic or other kinds of things?
Yeah, well, so. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were still talking. Please keep, keep going.
I was just gonna say, I can see how right now they can't tell us that to, to a degree that would be of any kind of certainty. But at the same time, I mean, if they move 100 people, you know, they moved 50 people or 100 people in there from LaRoche. You know, is that due now to the parking that was put in for what they're doing? You know, I'm not sure how that plays in the planning commission and the town approval process, because if it's just a renovation of a building, that doesn't necessarily have to come to the planning commission. Nor, I mean, you have to get a building permit from the town. I get that, but it doesn't necessarily go back through the planning commission, at least from work I've done in, in the town.
Right. So in, in a case like this, it would kind of, you know, I know a lot of this discussion depends on what eventually it turns into, but in any situation in which there's either a commercial, I know we refer to this as institutional, but you know, it's essentially commercial construction. When there's any sort of significant change in use, you know, permitted use within the district already, but say, you know, you're, you're going from retail to restaurant. Those are things that are treated somewhat differently in our parking requirements for, you know, in any, any zoning issues. So depending on if they came in and essentially said, well, this is just going to be another residential facility that is not going to change the number of people in here or is not going to change the activities or whatever, they would first A, have to provide some evidence you know, to that effect, some confirmation that this is indeed what we're doing with this use. They'd have to get an occupancy inspection alongside the building permits like you referenced. This is all assuming, you know, that this would be continuing in the shell of this building rather than
Right.
major tear down. So at that point, when I'm looking at the occupancy permit for, for my portion of it anyway, I would look at the use and if it wasn't pretty much a like use, that triggers me to take a look at our zoning ordinances requirements for parking and either, you know, I might be able to look at it and say, all right, these, these requirements are essentially the same. You know, a lot of buildings tend to be a little bit overparked anyway. In which case it's not much of a concern if it's, you know, one or two spots difference, something like that. If there was a parking demand that was called for in our zoning ordinance that significantly, you know, I, that I felt might significantly exceed or the uses were just on its face so different. Then at that point, we do have the, the right to require a parking study or some sort of justification.
That would all be fleshed out when they came in for a building permit then. It wouldn't necessarily be a land development submission.
Potentially for the occupancy permit more particularly, which I mean, those are kind of things that would go hand in hand. But building permits and from our offices standpoint, just deal with what is happening to the structure, whereas the occupancy permit is the one that deals with what is the use of the structure.
And I, and I guess I would further add to that, you know, the, the ambiguity of whether it's for sure going to be university versus some other tenant or user. You know, with the university, as we all know, they have other existing parking that's already on their campus. So if they were also to move into provincial house, you know, we would be able to at that point study and determine whether that parking that's on their campus is sufficient to cover that or again, as we were alluding to, whether or not if we need to add in more parking, then again, that could maybe trigger the need to instruct that new parking and come back in for lane development to be able to get the approvals for that.
And, and in that kind of situation, you know, I know that these are kind of two entities that work very closely together and are sort of intertwined. But let's say there is a situation in which they weren't, they were just neighbors and somebody was kind of overparked. So, you know, they wanted to share. Our ordinance does provide in certain cases for, you know, the colloquial version of it is, okay, well, if you say you need less parking spots, make your case. And we'll review it against, you know, the best traffic engineering standards we know. And if it checks out, then you may be approved to do some sort of parking sharing with a formal agreement between the two entities.
Again, I know we can't really stop from what's happening. It's just since there is a potential change in that existing provincial house usage in the future, because they're going to vacate it. It's there. I, I would assume they're not going to want to let it sit there empty forever because that's not very effective for them.
No, you're right. I mean, there's certainly an intent to, to do something in, in find a tenant for or some sort of long term plan. So it does not sit there empty. You are correct about that.
Right.
I just, we just, we just don't know the timing or for sure who that user is going to be.
Right. I just want to make sure that, that when that potential change happens, that the town is able to ensure that again, 50 more spots shouldn't be provided or whatever traffic, you know, you're, you know, again, I go back to if you put 100 offices in there, you know, versus 100 beds, then you know, the nuns don't all have cars, but if you put 100 offices in there, that's 100 cars because there's people in that building.
Although I'm not sure that our parking requirements are too terribly different for an office and a residence, to be honest. So, but I know it's just an example.
I'm just saying trips and things like that.
Right.
Okay, so I'll just defer that. The other question I had is in, in Tim, I don't know if you're the guy or who, how do you determine how many spots? I mean, what's the town's ordinance with regards to the number of spots required for this type of usage? Is it one, how did you, how do we? What's the, what's the town requirements to, for that, plus the staff, you know, all that kind of stuff?
Well, I mean, we do, we, we have started to look at that based on the comment letter that we did receive. I don't have those exact numbers. I do know that because of the nature of the proposed building and the types of uses between the independent living and some of the more intensive skilled care and assisted living way to the healthcare part of it, I do know that that also complicates to some degree another. So that is, I'll be honest with you, that is something that look at as far as those exact numbers, just so we can better ascertain what the requirement is. I do know that at a high level, we looked at it a couple of months ago, you know, our estimation when we're looking at, for example, you know, Kearns spirituality center as a retreat center still maintaining its use for their events and conferences. And then also with the new residence that the parking that we would be provided compared to what we had at that time calculated to be fire spaces, we felt like we were reading that as far as even, you know, even thinking about looking at it from like the maximum capacity for events. From our discussions with the sisters, you know, they've indicated that, you know, they really don't necessarily have, you know, that often where they're fully maxed out with some of this. There may be a few times a year where they're at full capacity. So again, the approach, you know, that we were trying to take was to try to not overbuild the parking, knowing that, you know, in most cases, there's more than enough parking under campus for how it is operating currently and that existing population.
Again, I still think for the process of the plan approval, we need to have a calculation that shows us, you know, this is what, you know, and I think, you know, my two senses, you're going to need more spots for the staff for the residents than you are for the occupants. Because you're going to have a lot of nursing care and things like that. So, you know, whereas I don't think there's a lot of cars associated with some of the residents there, but so that, those kinds of numbers I think would be important to have and.
We would be, we would be happy to take a look at that and certainly document that as part of our resubmission. There's, we'd be glad to do that for you.
I, I would think that's something Dan or Gateway would be looking at too, but.
For, for reference, depending on what each type of unit does, assisted living, so not, you know, completely the level of the nursing home is one bed for every two units, or you could say, you know, half a bed per unit or excuse me, half a parking spot per bed. Confusing my residential and my personal care. Let me just say that again from the top. So I get it correct. For every bed in a personal care or assisted living facility, you need one half of a parking space or one parking space for every two beds. If it's something, a unit or, or a wing of the residence or anything that would, would rise to the level of what we define as a nursing home, then it's one parking space for every three beds. Now for any actual residence, you know, norm, sort of a normal apartment unit that doesn't have the medical care aspect, it typically is two parking spots for each unit. In this case, it looks like they should be fine with, with the number of, you know, they had more beds at the existing facility than they're proposing here. However, you know, if there was an additional issue that arose, that could be one of those situations where we could say, you know, let's state your case. If you don't really need two cards for every, you know, residential unit for the sisters living here, presumably they don't have a family living in the residential units that needs a bunch of parking spaces, that could be an opportunity too.
Okay. And I, like I said, I know they have soccer games on that field there. So I mean, you have that kind of activity coming on too. So and there is the, the gathering and retreats, the activities that go on at Kearns. So you do have some outside activities that are going to be contributing to parking needs on the campus.
Yeah. Well, we had looked at the numbers a little while back. We had also started to look at with the new residence facility also factoring in the uses incurred in those numbers in.
Okay.
Our earlier calculations looked like we would be based on the parking that we would be putting back after we demolished the, the construction, we would still be able to meet those requirements, but we can certainly take another look at that in detail that is part of our resubmission.
I, I would, I would appreciate that just so we can all feel comfortable that, you know, this number just didn't come out of the air. There's some
Understood.
logic to confirm that that's adequate.
No, I think that's fair.
Thank you. That's, that's pretty much all I had at this point. I had, I asked before about, you know, finishes and stuff like that. So hopefully we'll be able to get that information the next time through also.
Yes, we, we will be happy to provide that information.
Okay. Is there anyone else on planning commission who would like to make a comment?
Yeah, this is Dan. I'd like to follow up a little bit on that very quickly on the parking and such. I happened to drive through there today at about 2:30 in the afternoon, just to refresh my memory of what we were dealing with. And the new construction is going to, for a, from, from a large standpoint, occupy what is currently a current parking lot. And there were, the school was letting out because there is a, a elementary or grade school or some functioning school there. There were probably eight or 10 school buses lined up. These were not the big buses. They were the mini buses, but nevertheless there were eight or 10 of them that were, that were in the space which the new building will now occupy. And there were probably, I don't know, half a dozen to 10 parents in their cars waiting, all waiting to be picking up children. And I'm just wondering how that circulation or how that aspect is being taken into account. Because I assume the school will continue and so therefore those buses and parents picking up kids will continue. And if you're disrupting where they currently sit, where will they sit in the future?
Yeah, I, I, we, we have had conversations with the sisters about that very issue. I can tell you that there's no final decision about it, but we know that there are certainly opportunities depending on if we, how we realign and reconfigure the driveways around the building that will certainly need to make some adjustments to where that bus stacking occurs as well as the stacking for the parents that are doing the drop off and pickup. So I, I don't have a definitive answer tonight as far as what that exact plan is. I just, I can tell you that we've discussed it and if we need to be providing the commission more details on that, we can certainly provide it as part of our, our next appearance and also the next submission if that's necessary.
And I, I would just say, Dan, I think we should see that because again, just from my previous career, I know they're very picky about how buses move through areas to get to, you know, like they don't like driving through parking lots and stuff like that, because that kind of the accident, you know, somebody backs out. Like that. So it would be nice, Tim, if you could show us how, you know, particularly bus traffic, I think would be most important would flow through the, I think, Dan, that's a good, that's very good.
Yeah, we had, we had prepared a few initial diagrams to share with the sisters, just to illustrate the different options for it. But again, as I had mentioned, there, there wasn't a definitive, this is how we're going to do that. So we can certainly revisit those and have a further conversation with the sisters and perhaps, you know, when uh, perhaps, you know, when we resubmit and appear next, uh, we can share with you what we think is going to be their preferred approach to be able to handle that issue.
I would encourage contact the bus companies that actually service the school. Cause the sisters might have an idea that they like, but might not be, you know, the bus company might say, hey, we're not doing that. You know, they, they get to make the final call and I hate to see you lay this all out and they tell you that's not how, that's not how we do this. So you, you, you would probably be well suited to, uh, talk to the, the service providers. So you're comfortable that whatever you're going to do there, they're, they're still willing and able to send the buses through.
Understood.
For your own sake of, before you design something and blows up on you when you try and make it work. So.
No, I appreciate that.
And, and one other traffic related issue, we were talking earlier about what if part of the main house goes over to some other use and additional traffic, where would we park? Uh, there is a, uh, kind of an interesting little portico in the front of the mother house. That's only about a lane wide. It's, it's, it's a, it's kind of funny and it, it is, it is a bottleneck. And I can see it as being a bottleneck if increased traffic were to occur. And so I just point that out as having driven through there a few times. If that were, if traffic were to increase, I could see that as being a problem. And I just hope somebody is taking a look at it.
Well, it is actually something we looked at as part of the master plan. And if you can look at where my arrow is pointing, that's one of the reasons why, and if, if, I don't know if you can see, I'm going to try to trace it, but the existing parking in front of the sisters provincial house right now is kind of in that rectangle area that I'm tracing, which as you pointed out, does go under that, uh, that, that portico. The reason why you're seeing in this scheme, which is part of the master plan, that parking bows out is to take that circulation that has to go through that portico.
Okay.
Just to a very point of trying to improve the circulation, in, 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 increase the pedestrian safety for people that have to walk in the parking spaces due from the entry under there, um, and just try to get the circulation pulled away and make it a more efficient and safer area for the cars to come through, drop off and for, uh, the actual circulation of the parking to be able to get through there a little bit easier without bottlenecking and without interfering and causing problems with people going back and forth.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then two quick other comments. You mentioned that you would probably be taking down most of the trees that are in that area.
Say most, I just said that there are going to be trees and I can pull up the demolition plan.
Well, that's not even, I, I understand you, due to construction trees, some trees have to go, but some of those trees are probably a hundred and plus years old back there. And they're, they're huge, gorgeous, big old mature hardwoods. And I guess my only wish would be is many could be saved, tried to be saved. That's all.
Understood. Yep. And with, you know, with how we approach projects, that we will try our best to, to save any ones that we can.
And then lastly, uh, well, actually two things. Second to last, I think that the mother house is architecturally one of the most interesting buildings we have in McCandless. I think it's, I think it really is beautiful. And, uh, I would hope that the building that you are building can in any way possible mirror as many of the aspects of that mother house as is possible. I think the roof is very dramatic on the mother house. I don't know whether you could be more dramatic in the roof that you are planning. The big spires, I mean, all of that stuff is, I think it's one of the prettiest things we've got in McCandless. And then along those lines, are you, or will the people going along Cumberland Road going to be seeing this new construction or do the, to the buildings to the north of the new construction, between the new construction and Cumberland Road block it?
Are you? I mean, the overall heights of the new building will be a bit higher, I believe than Kearns is now. Um, and that's just because we're talking about a three-story building, uh, compared to the existing Kearns, which I believe is um, at its highest point, only two stories. Now, if you recall, along Cumberland, there are existing trees and buffer nets already there now that will help with that screening. Um, and we've certainly looked at, uh, this.
Actually, I'm not trying to screen it. I'm not trying to screen it. I'm, I'm hoping that the building, which will be seen from Cumberland Road can be pleasing enough that it's a, that it's an asset. If you drive along Cumberland Road, you see this nice looking building rising up in the background. Again, it goes, it goes to my other comment that I think the main mother house is so striking. I would hope that the new construction can mirror some of those attributes.
Well, I'll certainly pass it on to the sisters and our design team. I mean, obviously as we were going through our process, you know, we'll have to monitor, you know, how much of that detailing we can incorporate, you know, based on the cost for the project, but uh, we're certainly trying to, uh, create a very attractive overall project, not only the site, but as well as the building. And we think that it will be visually appealing from that, the, the Vianish point from Cumberland Road.
Now, if you look at the north elevation, the drawings, Dan, there's a little bit of stone on the first floor, not even all the way across. And then I would say three, more than three quarters of it will be vinyl siding or whatever they're plating it in. So you're going to, you're going to see a lot of siding.
Okay. Well, I, my point is obvious. I hope you can take it into account.
Understood.
That's all for me.
Okay. Anyone else? Jonathan?
No, I think the, the biggest primary concern is the parking and then as, as, as layout and aesthetics, but I think that's been well covered.
Okay. Brendan?
Nothing yet.
Greg?
No, I don't have any.
Uh, who else is here? Oh, Lamar, I can't see you Lamar. That's why I didn't call you.
All right, Tim, no worries. No additional comments.
Okay. I had a couple of comments. Uh, how many nuns are, are currently in the mother house?
Uh, let's see here. I can, I can tell you that the overall current population is just over 70. And I think that that includes a couple non-congregation that numbers. I can, and I, I will be honest at, that's as of an update uh, when I asked back in October, and I do believe the numbers have unfortunately declined slightly since then. So if we need a more up-to-date estimate or total, I can give you that, but I, my, the last numbers I had was that the current residential population on campus as was in the seventies. And I know that, um, the majority of the beds are split between the uh, the mother house and St. Joseph's. I'm trying to pull up a document that I have here that might have that broken down if you hear it in a second. Okay.
Find anything?
Let's see here. Yeah, I think I, let's see here. I know that the houses, the individual ones, the, the sisters indicated that uh, there's 12 in there. So 12 minus the 73, it gets you about 60 or, you know, in a range of about 60 that are between the mother house and St. Joseph's.
Well, my, my only concern here is that, um, if this is like every other order of nuns, they're aging and passing away and, and gradually getting fewer and fewer nuns. Consequently, I would assume that over, over time, your new building will be primarily for assisted living. How, how, uh, how many rooms are there in this, this building again?
The number of rooms or the number of beds?
Number of beds.
Number of beds. We are proposing 83 beds currently.
How much?
Eighty-three beds.
Eighty-three. Okay. So over time, the number of assisted living people there will increase and the nuns will decrease. I think that's pretty common. So at, at some point, this is going to be basically like a regular, almost, almost like a regular commercial facility for assisted living patients. At that point, are you going to need, do you have the required parking for, for, for that situation? For people coming to visit? I mean, right now, I think you said there was an increase of two spaces or something like.
A, a decrease. So it's, it's basically two, two parking spots per room. If it's an apartment, uh, one half to one-third parking spot per room. If it's assisted living or nursing.
How many spot, how many spots do we have here?
So as, as I noted earlier, within the project area, we have, I think it was a hundred and eighty-eight uh, that we end up with after construction, but then what we note as a project here, again, that's not necessarily everything on campus. That's what we counted in comparison to the quantity that was going to be demolished. Uh, so we ended up with two additional spaces. Uh, so yeah, I'm sorry, 188 is the final number versus 186 within the project area will be before we start construction.
And it just some back of the envelope math. If you're looking at, let's say 70 residential spaces, uh, residential units, you know, whatever, even if you don't try and get the parking demand reduced because there's not more than one car per residential unit. You'd still probably be just fine to have those 70-ish residential units and, you know, at least another 20, 23, 24. If it's assisted living, even more if it's nursing homes. So you know, I, I do agree, we want to have that official parking study to see that that all bears out, but.
I think so. I think we have to have, I mean, we now are going to be adding essentially 68,000 square feet of building. This, I don't know what Kettler Hall is, Kettler? Is that, did I pronounce it Kettler Hall?
That might be the school.
It's in the, the, the old building.
Well, the office, I believe the office school utilizes both, uh, part of the north wing and then Kettler Hall has a gymnasium. And I believe if I remember right, there's, uh, spaces in the lower level. Uh, it might be a couple of offices and classrooms and things like that in there.
So you're going to have Kettler Hall, you're going to have the Kern Spirituality Center and the, uh, provincial, provincial house and whatever that is behind it there, Saint Joseph's Center. And then a couple of small buildings back there, but, um, you're going to be adding 68,000 square feet and you're only adding basically two spots to this, to this campus. It doesn't seem to, 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 to mesh. But I would, I would hope you would take a good look at the entire north campus here and, and take a good look at what you need potentially for, uh, for parking.
Okay. Well, and.
Even if you don't build it, even if you don't build it in this plan, I mean, you can still plan for it.
Right. And I think that that's what our strategy and approach was that, you know, I think we certainly have ways between um, the studies we've done as part of this project and the parking that we're counting for with this proposal and some of the other additional parking that we have, uh, been able to plan for with the master plan. I, I think there's, there's, there's definitely an opportunity to accommodate the parking that's needed. I think the question is just going to be in our, in our preferences to not necessarily have to build it all, just because, you know.
Yeah, you wouldn't have to build it now until you actually have a use for the.
Correct. Yep. So I think, I, I think as part of, uh, more detailed parking study or information, we can go back and, and provide those calculations and also help to illustrate where that additional parking capacity could be located to accommodate those needed numbers.
Yeah. How many kids are in their school right now? Do you know that?
Uh, I do have that number. It might take me a little bit to.
Well, that's, that's never mind. It's, but it, they, they have a decent sized school. And, and I don't know how it is today, but when some of our kids went, it was, um, you know, it was still a pretty good, uh, operating sys- situation. They, they had quite a few kids and, um, they had people with money putting the kids in school. But I think, uh, what, uh, Rob was talking about with the, with the, uh, buses is going to be important. The parents lining up to pick up their kids is important.
Yep.
So all of that, that sort of thing is going to work in there and so I think you need to plan for that somehow.
Yep. Understood. And, and certainly the sisters recognize the need to make sure that from a circulation flow, it works, but also from a safety perspective. So that, that is on their minds as well. And uh, we can certainly provide more information about that.
Okay. The Kettler Hall, that is, um, rendered in darker. Are you going to do something with that?
No, that's, uh, it's rendered darker just because it happens to fit within the project area. Uh, that's more of a uh, graphic illustrated thing that is, we're not doing any renovations to the building. That's just, it just happens to fall within our, our main project area.
Okay.
So you grayed out anything that wasn't in the limited disturbance, basically?
Correct. Yeah. That's why the provincial house and St. Joseph's Center appear lighter and because we aren't doing, uh, disturbance and construction activity around Kettler. That's why that was shaded.
Yeah. I thought maybe you were going to do some remodeling there. Okay. Uh, it, it, it still looks like you have some work to do.
Agreed. Well, we certainly, uh, were not anticipating we were going to get, uh, a recommendation for approval or anything that we figured that we would be back. So.
If I were you, for your next presentation.
I'm sorry?
I said, for your next presentation, if I were you, I would do a, a similar drawing that you have right here for your campus plan for the existing situation. So we have a good idea of what the existing and the new both look like.
Sure.
And then also, uh, take a look at the architecture of the building. Bring in materials, show us what they're going to look like in color if you can. You might want to bring along the architectural work on it. I don't know if I bring along, we're all doing this virtually, but, uh, have them available.
I, I think that that's, uh, that's something that the commission would like, would like to be able to have him here. We could certainly ask him to do that.
Okay. So I guess at this point then we will be tabling this, this, uh, proposal. Is that correct? Uh, RJ?
Yes, that was what we were expecting to do.
Okay. So is there any other, are there any other comments by planning commission members or other folks on this?
We, um, I did want to give Dan Dizeroth the opportunity to, um, elaborate on the, the engineer's review.
Oh, yeah.
We closed.
Okay.
Thank you, RJ. Uh, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I do have a letter dated, uh, December 23rd, 2020. And we did have the opportunity to review the project. My review is broken down into, uh, various sections. I'm not going to go over every comment. Just like to highlight a couple of things that we didn't talk about, uh, the, uh, on the subdivision plan. Uh, we want some notes on there related to the sidewalks. There is a requirement for sidewalks on the campus. We think that, uh, that they can provide a waiver uh, for sidewalks within the existing campus because they don't exist there now. Uh, but we, uh, think that they should put a note on the plan stating that if they do the subdivision, uh, that issue of sidewalks will, will have to remain that we, we don't want to give up the ability to require sidewalks, depending upon what that development might become.
So Dan, just to, just to ask you a question about that, is that the way that you're wording that, can we interpret that to mean that when that subdivided parcel gets developed? Or are you saying when the subdivision happens?
It's just a note on the plan stating that the development of that parcel, when that occurs.
Okay.
Sidewalks will have to be considered.
They would be coming back, whoever that is, for a second review, um, you know, of the development site plan. So at that point, that requirement would trigger again.
And that's what, and that's what we're, so we just wanted to make sure that we were interpreting right, that it's when it's developed, not necessarily right now, when the subdivision is approved.
Okay. Moving on to my land development comments, we touched briefly on trees. Uh, there is a, a request for modification, uh, to the section of the ordinance, uh, related to preservable trees. We asked for some more information similar with the planning, uh, commission asked for, uh, relative to which trees are going to be removed, how many are going to be added? Uh, so we hope to get more information on that. Related to, uh, the, uh, buffer yards, uh, we're, we're asking for some more information on the required buffer yards that we ensure conformance to the ordinance. And then as it, as it relates to the sidewalks, again, uh, will require some notes on the land development plan also, uh, to clarify issues related to the sidewalk, similar to the, uh, subdivision plan. Uh, moving on to the stormwater management, uh, they are proposing a couple of large rain gardens on the site. Uh, we have a very, uh, strict, uh, stormwater ordinance. We had a number of comments related to that. We've already, already been in touch with the designer, uh, on his addressing a number of those comments. So I think we'll be fine with stormwater. I'm not going to elaborate anymore on that. And then as it relates to the discussion that occurred tonight regarding traffic, circulation and parking, I did have the plan reviewed by our traffic engineer, Michael Haberman, uh, who, uh, had some comments. who had some comments and they're very similar to what the planning commission asked for, especially with regards to parking and providing a summary of the entire campus and the uses and the amount of parking provided. In addition, the repurposing of the building and what that might add to the development. And as the planning commission noted tonight, there were concerns on that parking. I think a couple of ways that we can address that. If they don't want to build that parking right now, we can include notes on the land development plan. We can also ask for, and, and put those within a development agreement to make sure that we have something in writing that we can follow along with related to additional parking that may be required in the future. And then just really under the general side of things, there's a number of other third-party permits that will be required for this project, including an MPDS permit reviewed by MTSA and other reviews by other people on, at, at the township in terms of the staff, the fire marshal and so forth. So that, that's pretty much the summary. Just wanted to highlight a couple of extra things in my letter if you not had the chance to review it yet. That's it.
And it's Rob. Hey, I saw some markings for steep slopes in different areas. Like around some of the ponds and stuff. Did you guys have any comments on that at all? Are they okay?
Yeah, I believe on the slopes to the ponds, they're fine.
Okay. Cause there was something about a retaining wall too.
Yeah, they need to provide more information on the tops of walls, bottom of walls, what type of materials they're gonna provide.
Okay. I just didn't, I know if it's over four feet or something, they have to have a fence. I just.
Correct.
Okay, we'll work that, we'll check on that, make sure next time it comes through. Okay.
RJ?
Uh, I, I do not have any additional comments. Um, I.
Public comments?
Oh, no public comments. Sorry. I thought you were asking me, although I had nothing to say. I, for, for the public here, I think that most of the folks on the call are either from the town or are part of the next presenting group, but just in case we've got some audience members, please be aware that if you want to make a public comment on this plan, you can sign up using the chat box function. I just need your name, address and subjective comment and we can give a couple of seconds. You know, just in case, but I, I don't think I see anyone.
You have none so far.
I do not have anyone signed up at this point.
Okay.
Before we, before we move on, I just, since it's kind of new that we have a town attorney on deck, I just wanted to check in and see if he would like to add any town attorney's comments.
No, I would have chimed in if I had anything, if, if there was opportunity to do so, but I do appreciate the check-in.
All right.
Still nothing?
No, no, there's.
Okay, well then let's, let's move to, to table this till next month. And could I have a motion to do that, please?
Motion to table?
Is there a second?
Second to motion.
All in favor? Close? Okay.
All right, and to the developer, I will be in touch with you, of course, and please do reach out if you have any questions during the revision process.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a dialysis clinic incorporated development. Discussion of revised conceptual site plan. RJ and I met with the developer several weeks ago. I don't remember how long now. We had a very long, unproductive meeting. So we'll see what, we'll see what they come up with.
Kaylee, before we officially get started here, I just wanted to make sure that I enabled the microphones and cameras of everybody that's with you or that, you know, is going to be speaking. I see we have, oh, I'm not going to try and pronounce K S L O A. Can I change your name to a name?
That is Kayla Sloan. She's with the architect. She, yeah, she's on our team. You can.
All right, Kayla, if I spelled your name wrong, please feel free to fix it. I'm gonna send you a microphone request. Can't turn your mics on and off, so if you're gonna speak later and you want it off, send a chat message. Otherwise, I'm turning your mic on now. Kaylee, is there anyone else here?
Uh, Ira Chilton, he's also with the architect. He's here tonight. And then Patty Gauntner is here. She is with DCI, which is the owner.
All right, I sent both of them mic and camera requests. Not sure if they're gonna be actively participating or just along for the ride. So, you know, up to both of you. But if you do decide to speak, please turn your camera on if you turn it off. So that way the recording picks it up.
All right, am I able to share a screen then if I?
Oh, you know, hang on, let me.
I haven't tried.
Now you can.
Okay, can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
So thank you for your time, everyone. My name is Kaylee Bevington. I'm an assistant project manager with Bowler. I'm sure you guys just saw, I also have with me Kayla Sloan and Ira Chilton. They are with projects, the project architect. And Patty Gauntner is here with DCI, who will be the end user of the site. Some of you might remember, we were here back in October with our land development application. We kind of had a long conversation about this site and how we wanted it to work and fit in with the community. So we've done some back and forth with the town and with the planning commission chair, trying to find the best way to make the DCI's operations work and meet the spirit of the code. So hopefully we are able to do that here. Tonight, we just have our site plan here for presentation. We are actively working on re-engineering the site to meet this new site plan. And we will be submitting that to Gateway Engineers to get a full comment letter back from them. Hopefully, because we're able to incorporate their last round of comments, we won't have many from them. And we can have a clean letter when we come back to you in February. And then hopefully in February, we can get your recommendations approval. So I'll kind of just do a recap for those of you that missed the October meeting and then I can, I'll go through the screen here and show you kind of how this site has evolved. Dialysis Clinic, Inc. is a nonprofit service organization. They provide care to patients with NSH renal disease. They have many clinics all over the country, including several in the greater Pittsburgh area. DCI is proposing to develop this approximately two point one four acres of land. It's located at eight forty, eighty-four, forty-three Perry Highway. The dialysis clinic will have an approximately nine thousand nine hundred square foot footprint. The site is currently three parcels and we will be proposing to consolidate those into one parcel. Most of the site is currently undeveloped, except for one single family home and gravel driveway. The project will include installation of utilities, landscaping and storm sewer that are all necessary to support this redevelopment. The dialysis clinic itself will have, I believe, twenty-four treatment stations and will receive patients from both ambulances and personal vehicles. Typical operating hours will be from five AM to four thirty PM. So that's kind of just a quick overview of DCI and the site. So what you see on the screen here right now is what we initially submitted back in October. So this was our original full land development application package that was reviewed by Gateway Engineers. A couple of things to note on this plan. We did have this parking lot in front of the building. Note the driveway location, and then we did have this connection to the Howard Hannah property that is to the south. At that meeting, some concerns were raised that this did not meet the intent of the code. And that mostly surrounded around the definition of a front yard and what can or cannot be in that front yard. So there's a little bit of ambiguity in the way the code is. It's a little bit of a gray area. But I think the consensus was we don't want parking in front of the building. That, that's, that was really the sticking point at that time. So what we did was we went back, we being Bowler went back and talked to DCI about how can we shift this site around a little bit to try and accommodate the requests of the planning commission. And what we did was, you see my screen now, we, we revised it slightly to remove all the parking in front of the building that wasn't ADA, that wasn't accessible. And we took this plan and came back and we met with RJ and Ted. This is the meeting that Ted referenced at the beginning here. And like he said, we had kind of a back and forth about what the site should or shouldn't do. And he felt that we really still weren't meeting the intent of the code. This really wouldn't make him happy about the way that this would fit in with the rest of the area. So where we've landed now is with this. If you can see my screen now, we've removed all the parking from the front of the building. So all of the parking is now on the side and the rear of the building. To do that and to accommodate these accessible spaces, which are really the most used spaces by the patients of the clinic. The architect has added another entrance on this side of the building, on the side of the building, even though this is the front. So ambulance will still come under this. I don't know what you call canopy here and enter the building this way, or people that drive and park can enter the building here and then they'll enter the lobby. As part of this site layout change, a few things were accomplished. So we, we eliminated all of the parking in front of the building. So there's now an open view from Perry Highway to the building with no parking in between. The drive, the drive entrance has shifted to the south a few feet, not drastically, but it has shifted to the south, which actually will be to the benefit of the development and from PennDOT's perspective, they like to see that drive move a little further south and away from this intersection up here. And then we are also proposing to eliminate the access drive between the Howard Hannah property and our property that will require waiver from the council. But we feel that this works best with the site overall. Howard Hannah really would like to see that drive eliminated as well. And in return, Howard Hannah will allow us to connect our storm water, which previously was gonna flow over these residential properties to the rear. And now we'll connect through the Howard Hannah property to a public storm line that's down, down here. Sorry?
So that's a win.
Yeah, so we were able to accomplish a few things with these tweaks. Let me see if there's anything else on my list here.
Just one question?
Yeah.
You, how come you have so many hand, I mean, you have twelve handicap spots or twenty-four beds? I mean, what's, what's your criteria?
That was a request of Dialysis Clinic and Patty can probably speak to that better than I can, but I think on their other sites, they found that that is the number of spaces they need for, that need to be accessible for patients.
That's fifty percent of the beds would have somebody.
I mean, I think a lot of the people coming here are quite sick. So it kind of makes sense that they would need accessible parking.
They can't.
We currently have twenty-one patients dialyzing. So twenty-one patients in the morning, twenty-one patients in the afternoon. And we currently occupy anywhere from eight to ten handicap spaces on each one of those shifts. So we do have a number of patients that come by ambulance. We also, the other half of those patients drive themselves, but do require handicap parking.
Okay, I'm just, I mean, if, even though you need to out, I mean, you can't park in that unless you have a placard. So just, don't want to make more handicap pushes people further away so that you, you know, it just seems like it's, it's a lot for such a small building. That's what kind of came out at me, but.
We had requested two additional spaces for the fact that we were going to add some additional chairs to the senses or to each shift senses.
A- again, it's, it's probably three, Kaylee probably knows that, probably three times or times more than you really need by code.
Understood. I'm talking about reality, though. This is what our, this is what our current reality is.
Okay, that, again, that's, I'm just don't want to see a rob Peter to pay Paul, I guess, is my analogy. But that's fine if that's what you think you need. That's, that's.
Well, and some of the parking, so, you know, the other good bit of the parking will be for employees. And I would expect most of them will park in the rear of the building because they access the, they get inside through this bottom corner. So you've kind of broken up your parking a little bit in that way.
Okay.
So that was kind of a quick overview. I didn't want to take up too much of your time since a lot of you have seen this before, but we really just wanted to get your feedback. We're hoping to hit the ground running here with this site plan. And we thought the best way to do that was to come and present to you here tonight. And, you know, we're really trying to work with the township and, and the planning commission to make this something that works for everyone, a site where it operates the way DCI needs it to, but it also fits within the community. And with that, I will be happy to answer, answer any other questions. I do have also the color renderings from the architect. I can put those up here too. I know those were requested back in October. So when we submit our full package back to the township and to Gateway, we will obviously include these color renderings and an updated floor plan.
If you could go back to your site plan first. There it is. Where is the stormwater?
Stormwater will be, stormwater will be similar to how it was in that first submission. We'll have above-ground storage here in the front and we have underground storage in the rear. We have to maintain the current watersheds as they are, and this is a ridge today. So we have to have some stormwater come out on this side of the property and then the rest has to drain down to the low part of the front of the site and drain to Perry Highway.
Kaylee, how high is? How high is the retaining wall on the bend?
That hasn't fully been engineered yet. Like I said, we're still working through that. I do think the retaining walls will have dropped down a little bit from our previous submission, but I can't say that for certain.
Yeah, they were kind of big, if I remember the last time you came through. And I realize that's corners sloping away, so. Okay, well, we'll wait to see what that looks like when it comes in then. Okay.
And, and Kaylee, this is Dan, just a question for you on that, that facility in the front of the building. Can that be landscaped? Will that be a rain garden or what are you, what are you looking?
Yeah, that, that will be a landscaped MRC facility. So it will have plantings in it and, and landscaping. It, it won't just be, it won't be gravel or just grass. It will have designed features in it.
Okay. And, and just my thoughts to the planning commission, the, the connection into Hannah for the stormwater is a huge win because this wasn't, this wasn't really thought out in terms of future connections and where they would go. And there's really no other opportunity to take this water anywhere else. So I would strongly support the, the not having the need for the connection and if that provides for stormwater.
Yeah, and I, I do want to add to that a bit because I, personally, when it comes to sort of these commercial stretches where you've got one line of commercial, you know, one main artery for the access in and out. I do tend to strongly favor those inner property connections. However, you know, I think something that, that Dan and I have discussed with the developers is at least having something on the recording plan. You know, the sort of the formal documents that come out of this that say, this is not a waiver forever if these uses change significantly. Because right now, you know, the two neighboring uses, I, I don't think there are too many people that are hopping out of the dialysis clinic to run down and buy a house, usually. I'm sure there are some cases, but, but you know, this is a really a situation where they're gonna have regular traffic coming between the two uses, but if that were to, you know, significantly change, that the town would have the right to say, all right, now we need this connection. If we're gonna approve that, that's something that I would prefer to be included in, you know, the recording of this, where it to move forward.
Other comments by other planning commission members?
A couple. This is Dan. As you come around the back of the building and you head down toward Howard Hannah, it looks as if the.
It looks as if the parking spaces stop, and then there's a large, largish area. What is that? It doesn't appear to be parking.
No, that is a loading area, so um. They do treatment onsite, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, um, Caleb, but they treat, they. Process chemicals and things back here. Trucks come, make deliveries. We needed to give them space to turn around and get back out, and then the, the trash facility is back there as well, so that gives the garbage trucks some room to maneuver.
Okay, thank you. Then uh on the elevation and the view from Perry Highway. It, it appears as if you've got a flat roof. Is there a parapet along there or what happens for? Air conditioning and or other facilities? Will they be sticking up off of that roof? Are they going to be shielded?
No, there is a parapet along that, I believe it is a thirty. Can you hear me?
Barely, barely.
Oh, sorry, my, my headphones cut out for a second. Um. So what I was saying was, yes, there is a parapet along the front of the building. I believe it is a three-foot parapet. I'll have to verify. Um, it is definitely no shorter than thirty inches. And the units are, they sit further back um behind the building. So especially since we're higher up from the road, too, you should not be able to see the units from the road.
That would be my, my desires, that the. Units are not just sticking up like. Anything sticking up off the roof.
Yes, correct. Understood, yeah.
More, Dan?
No, that's it.
Okay, Greg? How about uh Jonathan?
What, what's the distance between that, the uh? Loop, you said that ambulances will drop, uh, drop patients off. Uh, so when, when they go back towards the. Uh, go back toward, towards the road, what, what's the width? It, is, is that just grass there between the road and, and that?
In here?
Yeah, oh, thirty-one and a half feet.
Yeah, this is thirty-one and a half feet. This, this line here is that thirty-five front yard, thirty-five foot front yard line. Um, yeah, this will all be landscaped in here.
Okay.
In the middle of that loop, what will be in there? Uh, that will also be landscaped.
Lamar?
None from me, thanks.
Okay, Brendan?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, I have a few comments. I met with, with uh RJ and the developer several weeks ago, like I mentioned, and we tried to talk about this. At the end, uh, the developer said, what is your number one concern about our plan? And I said, my number one concern is that you have the detention pond right out front. In the area that was supposed to be all grass. Now, they still have that. My other concerns were that I thought that the, the whole site was considerably higher than it should be. They had um, if you cut the site down, you can do quite a lot. I mean, you're right at the northern edge, there's about a two to three foot. Retaining wall between it and the next property and then down in Howard Hannah is probably twelve, fifteen feet high. So if you reduce the, the heights of this lot, you would, I think, do quite a bit. You could fill in some of this corner over here in the northwest. That seems to be scrunching your plan down to the south. Well, the, the actual building. I've kind of given up on trying to get it back to the thirty-five foot mark, but uh I think. This seems to be so awkward to me. We have, I don't know how many feet up above here on the northern end of the site. But there's quite a bit of empty space that's not developed. Even though there's some property that's sloping down, but all of that could be fixed, I think relatively easily. And you go up five or six feet right from the highway into this site. It's, it's just, to me, this is not a good development of the site. I, I know that uh. Was it sheets? Put their retaining pond out front. But to be honest with you, I don't recall ever seeing that on the drawings. I just think that this is not a particularly good site plan. But uh, that's, that's my, my two cents worth on it. What are the building materials going to be uh on the building?
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have a stone veneer along the bottom and then it would be ephesus for the rest of it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what, I don't know what that ephesus is. What is that?
That's like driving.
No, okay. Thank you.
Are those, those columns out front or they masonry or what are they?
No, so they, they are also the stone veneer and um ephesus material. And they are just kind of a uh protrusion out from the building about four inches, so they're very shallow. Uh, more aesthetic columns.
Okay. All right, and you say that there is a significant parapet wall to, to hide the uh equipment?
Yes, I just. I just double checked, it is thirty-six inches um at the front of the building. And then the RTUs, they sit about halfway back. So they, there is a considerable distance between the parapet and then the first unit.
Okay, that's good. I don't have any problem with the way it looks. I think it's, it should be a nice building.
Thank you.
But I, I do think that the, the site development. It's not the way I would do it, certainly. But I need, be that as it may, I, my main concern is still the retaining. Uh, or the detention pond right out in front against the road. I don't think that's a good solution. And you're on a slope there, right there also. I'm not sure how that it's all going to work, but uh you're on a slope there also. Do you have a grading plan on this?
Uh, it's still being worked on. I don't have one that I can present um.
Okay.
Tonight.
All right. Well, I'd like to get some of the other planning commission members uh. Reaction to the, to my comments. Uh, I'd like to see what, what you think about having the retention, the detention pond out front. Number one, I guess. Since that was my main comment.
This may be my struggle to understand, so I just want to make sure I'm clear at this point. When we're talking about a stormwater facility in the front. When I think of detention pond, I think of a pond that usually drains over maybe two to three days. Um, after, you know, a significant event, but then it kind of just looks like an empty hole. If I'm understanding correctly, what is being proposed is something more like a rain garden, which. Assuming that they're taken care of, can be attractive. So which one are we talking about here? This is directed to Bowler. Which one is being proposed in this plan? This would be more like a rain garden, like that you're describing. So there are specific plantings that go into it. Um, it's pretty, it's relatively shallow. Um, you know, detention, a typical, traditional retention basin could be. Eight, nine, ten feet deep. Um, and it is just a big hole in the ground with tall grasses a lot of times. Um. This isn't anything like that. Uh, it would look similar probably to the, the sheets one, although this one would be. Probably a little larger and have a little bit more um robust plantings in it, although I am, I'm certainly not a landscape architect, so. I can't speak to that specifically, but um it is something that the DEP likes to see. They like to see um. Above ground storage when possible um to let the water, it, it's kind of a water quality issue as well, so. The plantings and the modified soil and the stone in this facility help clean the water before it's released to Perry Highway. So the facility kind of does. A few things uh beyond just managing the rate of the water, if that makes sense.
This is Lamar. Uh, I did have a question about that particular concern. Um, I'm sensitive to things like bordering when you have things in the front with detention lakes and ponds. Um, you know, the weather around here is unpredictable, so if, assuming that that, the worst case scenario is that it's completely full. What is the, what are the safety protocols and plans for uh surrounding that so that uh from the public?
Um, I mean, even though we are capturing the water for this site, it's not. It's not going to hold an enormous depth of water. At most, it would just be, you know, three feet-ish. Um, and we would design the facility and do the grading in that area to make sure if there was a, a situation where you overtopped the bank. You would go down onto Perry Highway and then the water would be captured by Perry Highway's um. Public stormwater system, but that's for a um. We have to design that facility to, to capture and hold back at a minimum, the one hundred year storm event. So it's a pretty significant storm event that we have to show is held back in our facility.
Yeah, well, re- re- east, recent history, our hundred year storms have been coming kind of frequent, so.
I, I understand.
That's what I, uh, that's why I wanted to bring that up.
So I think a, a good thing to sort of have the mental picture of, because all these stormwater facilities, you know, these are. Other than seeing a detention pond, which are highly common in residential, you know, subdivision plans, that's kind of, I mean, we all. We probably could all drive a couple streets down from where we live and see one pretty easily and. Um, the reason typically that those look or function the way that they do is very much is about infiltration rate and depth. So um like a retention or a detention pond may be designed to empty much more slowly. Um, you know, with, with sort of the function of we're holding water back so it doesn't overwhelm the system downstream. Um, all at once, whereas the rain gardens are designed to hold less at one time, but also empty much faster. So they're put on, usually they're put in conjunction with systems that can handle sort of that upsized flow. Again, I'm not an engineer, so the people that are engineers, please feel free to chime in. You pretty much got it. And the thing to remember, too, is whether we have an above-ground system like this rain garden that we're proposing or not. We have to have some kind of stormwater facility on this side of the site. Um, that's just the way the site watershed works. So even if we didn't have a rain garden there, we would likely have underground detention tanks. Um, and while you wouldn't see them and they wouldn't be there to concern you visually. The water would still be sitting there. It would just be sitting there underground and the relief point would, would still be Perry Highway. Um, that's just, that's just the safest outlet point for that water to go. So. Whether it's above or below ground, you will have a facility there. It's just a matter of whether you see it or not, really.
Let's, let's go from the uh, the northern, the northeastern corner of this site. Down, down towards the south. The northeastern corner of this site is about. Two to three feet above the site to the north. There's a little retaining wall that goes along there. Then as it goes south, this site stays relatively flat. But the street slopes. So down at the southern, at the southeastern point, that's, that's got to be what, twelve, fifteen feet high? Twelve feet high?
Probably um. Sorry.
Or what, I don't think you have one with grades on, at least that you, you brought.
No, I can probably pull one up here.
And that's just along Perry Highway. If you go to the backside of the site, it's, it's different because there's a ridge that's running along the front third of the site.
Now, you can see along, all the way along Perry Highway here, there's a, there's a bank that, that, that rises from the street up to the. More level part of the site. And down there, boy, I can't read these things. Maybe I can, oh, hey, I can manipulate this a little bit. It goes from like eleven twenty-two to eleven. Thirty-four, thirty-three, so it's going to be about, say, twelve feet down at that end. So you're going to be building up a wall for your, your um. I mean, you show it all, most of it in the uh thirty-five foot setback line. You're going to be building up. The ground. Ten, twelve feet in order to get a hole to go down for the. The uh detention pond. There has to be some retaining area. I mean, there has to be a uh, uh, an earth retaining area to keep that water in there. It, it, to me, it, this, it, a lot of this just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. I, I, I think that you're. You're taking the south end of this site. And you're developing it for building and driveway instead of using it for, for retention pond. In a more logical fashion. I mean, you can go to the north and use some of this property. Again, if you would cut some of this property, you could fill some of that northeast, northwest portion of it and, and probably. Make this a pretty good piece of property.
I understand, Mr. Minor. I mean, the, the, the site, as we graded it initially, I can't speak to where we're going to land, although the goal will be the same on this. Iteration, but we had a balanced site before and we definitely don't want to be hauling off material or importing material, so. Um, I know it looks like we're importing material or, or raising it, but we're really not in effect.
You're not raising it, you're just not lowering it.
Right, but lowering it would require us to haul up a good bit of material and, and we certainly don't want to do that. It would be costly and it would do damage to the roads likely, hauling.
Why couldn't you, why couldn't you fill more of that northwest corner?
Well, that's a wooded area. We'd rather keep the, the wooded area and it's a pretty steep slope and working with the geotechnical engineer. Um, typically, we really try to avoid touching steep slopes like that. It just ends up. Uh, to be problematic. You, you, there's risk involved with touching steep slopes like that. And there's residence, there's residential areas behind that.
You're putting in retaining walls anyway. I mean, why wouldn't you just put it further down the hill and fill behind it uh so that you could raise that slope? And if you, you know, if you cut some of the slope to begin with, you wouldn't have as much to fill.
Kaylee, the, the uh geotechnical borings that we did show that the, the overburden on the site. Is fairly shallow along the ridge, so if we tried to cut the ridge down, we'd be hitting rock. We'd be putting a lot of money into trying to get rock off of this thing. There's only so much overburden on the site.
Well, I, I, you know, and I hadn't, I didn't know that, number one. Uh, have you filed any of those to geotechnical uh documents with the town?
I don't know if that was submitted as part of our initial submission or not, RJ. Uh, it would definitely be submitted with our full package. Um. Let me.
Well, I don't want to beat this to death, so I, I'm done at this point.
But there was, there was a geotechnical report done. Uh, there was infiltration testing done. Um, so all of that information can be made available, absolutely.
The other thing to consider is, you know, we can make that, that uh rain garden shallower by. Putting a swale in that island in the center and making that part of the rain garden and then just simply trenching under our drive. And pulling the rain garden back and making it a shallower, hold the same amount of water, but making it less deep.
Yeah, really, we have opportunity um up here, since the site has shifted south a little bit. And like Ira just said, in this island and here, to really spread that water out and make those as shallow as possible.
And then you can pull that rain garden back and get it off the, you know, the, what, what he's concerned about is he doesn't want to earth and dam on that front end.
Well. I guess everybody's heard my comments. Are there any other comments on this? RJ, anything from you?
Uh, I'm just looking to see if there's anybody that might have signed up for public comment or anything. Um, I, I think that, you know, it, I'm kind of surprised that I've, I've come. On board with eliminating the access drive, to be honest, but, but um I think in our conversations, they've, they've made a pretty solid. Case and also the benefit of being able to tie into the Howard Hannah system. I think maybe what Rob was the one that said that's a win.
No problem with that.
Yeah, so, so I think we were all pleased to see that there's. Yeah, so, so I think we were all pleased to see that there's potential there. I mean, of course, that's, that's depending on the final agreement between those two private parties and council approving potentially. You know, a requested waiver of that drive. But, you know, I've, I've come around to be in support of that. I, I think that, uh, you know. With whatever stormwater features, the fully designed. Plan comes, comes back within the revision. I would definitely like to see a planting plan that probably would be included, but, you know, just to sort of iterate, reiterate on. On the meeting record, um, that I, I think that that's really important. And typically with rain garden type facilities, um, things like that are included in the O and M. Uh, operation and maintenance, sorry, for the, for the non acronym viewers at home. The, usually things like that are included there. So those are just definitely some things that I'd want to look at to be comfortable. But. You know, overall, I, I think it has the potential to be a nice looking building. So that's, that's it for me.
Okay, any other comments? None from the public, apparently?
I, I do not have anyone signed up. Last call if anyone's in the audience wishing to speak.
Okay, now is this plan here for final approval or is it here for?
It is not because we don't.
Think so.
Yeah, we just, this is, this is all that I've seen and I'm assuming all that they've got so far, um, for this concept. So we would still need to do the full engineer. You know, review.
So we would table this again. Is that what we would do?
Yes, this is, this is just kind of, I wanted to make sure that everyone had the opportunity to get some eyeballs on this thing before. They move forward with any sort of full engineering, so.
Yeah, I would suggest that you go out and take a look at this site. It's right beside Howard Hannah. It's worth taking a look at. In any event, okay, uh, could I have a motion to table?
I think this was just a concept review, Ted. I don't think this was an actual item.
Say that again?
Uh, you know what? Let me see. Mr. Corbell, if you're still on here, tell me, do you like a table or a motion here or not?
No, this was, this is not an application, um, like the sisters. This is something where we can just. Uh, send the developer on and, and invite them back when they're ready.
Okay.
All right.
That sounds good to me.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. In respect to this plan that we just looked at. I had sent, uh, a, um. Proposed clarification to zoning ordinance for that, that zoning ordinance into RJ. Just a few sentences. Did you, uh, did you, um, share those with the, uh, planning commission, RJ?
You know what? I didn't, I didn't distribute it fully, but I was hoping that maybe we could take a little bit of time to research and then bring it back. As, you know, actually some sort of draft that we could all discuss together.
You want to do that next month or do you want to discuss it now or what, what, what's your preference?
Uh, well, I don't have anything prepared right now. I, I would say if you want to put it on as a general discussion topic on next month's agenda, um. I, I think we're going to be back here because I'm expecting a simple subdivision submittal, but that needs to come in in the next couple of days. So we may end up canceling the meeting if we don't get. A submittal, um, for anything, but. Yeah, yeah, but I mean, in general, I'm not opposed to putting a discussion item on an agenda. In, in the imminent future.
All right, uh, I was just trying to clarify the ordinance that handled this RC district. To, basically to say that the front yard should be the front yard and not the front detention pond. And also to eliminate, uh, a couple of other things in the ordinance. Uh, however, uh, if you, if you can take a look at that, clean it up for me and, uh, distribute it, I would appreciate it.
Hey Ted, do the dudes, does Howard Hannah and the car parts or whatever those two or three buildings to the south? Do they have detention pond issues and how do they handle this?
They, they, they put them all in the back or underground, one of the two.
Okay.
None of them, all of those were done the way we anticipated the. Development to be done. They moved their buildings out to about somewhere between thirty-five and forty feet from the front yard, from the, uh, lot line. They grasped everything in the front. And all their parking is either in the back or on the side.
Yes, no, I, 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 I know what you're saying. I've, I drive past there enough to know what you're saying. I just didn't know if they had a similar retention issue.
Well, I, I mean, a retention issue is the same. Uh, I know that, uh, for example, um. Advanced Auto Parts, I believe, has an underground system. So they all, they all have detention systems. It's just a matter of how you handle it.
Can we mandate underground?
This is, this is the fifth in the line of five lots. The first four were all done in a similar fashion and this would be the last, really the last big lot to be developed in this particular little area. That's why I wanted it to, to look like the other ones. I mean, you, you, you would like these to have some, uh, relationship to each other.
Do we have the right to, to, uh, ask for and, and require underground?
Uh, Dan, to, to answer that. Particular question, I would say that that's dicey at best, you know, perhaps in a moment, if the town attorney has any comment, he may chime in on what's. Possible under a zoning ordinance. However, from a stormwater's perspective, um. What sort of the colloquial term for, for underground tanks is gray infrastructure in. Sort of contrast to what we refer to as green infrastructure. I will say that the water management and planning field has really, really moved towards green infrastructure. Recently, for a variety of reasons, one of them being because you're not dumping concrete into the ground. And, you know, the integrity of the water table, blah, 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 you know, all those things. Kind of go into. Sort of the water management field more favoring the green infrastructure techniques. So. I, I would personally be really hesitant to mandate any sort of stormwater function, um. Because really, you know, what we're going for is what's the safest and most efficient system. For the environment around any sort of development, but. You know, as with some of the other things that Ted brought up, that was one of the ones in, in sort of his comments to me, they can certainly be. Discussed, um, further and I, I, I'll be happy to do, you know, more in-depth research to prepare for that.
Okay.
Kim, you have any comments?
Um, no, I'm looking at the earth view of Perry Highway and I see what you're saying about those properties all being the same on that side. But if you look on the other side. All the way up and down, all the parking's right in the front. There's nothing, there's not a green inch anywhere.
No, that's because they're old. They were, they were there before the ordinance, uh, except for our sheets. They were there before the ordinance was put in.
I think if they do an elegant job on the, um. The, the, the pond there being a rainforest type, they could really do something nice there, I think.
Rain garden, no.
We will certainly have our code enforcement eyes on that if that's what comes forward.
I would just say, take a look, take a look at, uh, the, the big pond at Vincentian or some of those like that. I mean, that's, that's what they devolve into.
Yeah, the, the difference is Ted, that now we require operation and maintenance agreements on all those facilities for the private owners. So that, that's as we move into the future with these new developments, we're not going to have those anymore. Uh, we, we will demand, you know, that they be maintained.
Yeah, we do have some financial collateral to make sure that developers continue to maintain them.
And these are the new recommendations. I mean, this is, this is where stormwater is headed. Am I right, RJ? I mean, this is where it's headed. Yeah, that's.
That, that, that is true. Putting on my national green infrastructure.
Yeah, yeah. So we just can't keep doing things the way we've always done them. We have to keep up and improve as time goes on.
Walgreens and they have a, uh, rain garden type situation there that looks pretty decent. Okay, um. What else we got? Is there anything else?
I think it's just the minutes, but if, you know what, I did want to say, I, I noticed that Rob. His connection may have dropped while we were wrapping up that discussion and I just let him back into the room. So just in case he, well, he looks kind of frozen, so maybe he.
Yeah, I lost my connection.
Oh, good. We can hear you. Okay. There we are.
Getting something that says my internet connection is unstable.
We can hear you. Is, was there anything else that you wanted to add? I didn't know if you got dropped while, you know.
No, 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 that's good. I'm, I, I liked the change personally. I, I definitely didn't want to see the parking lot in the front and. I can understand Ted's concern about the rain garden, but I'd rather have a rain garden than a parking lot personally, just from my two cents, so.
I think, I, I really would suggest everybody go to the site because the southern end of this site is a really steep, uh. Person. Wall. And that's, they're putting the, the rain garden right against that. And if it, if it would fail, it would just flood, uh, our Hannah. But in any event, uh, should we, um, approve the December first minutes? Is there a motion? Has anyone have, does anyone have any corrections or comments on?
I will abstain because I was not in, in attendance, uh.
What was that?
I was abstaining.
Oh, yeah, you, you weren't there either, Greg, were you? Could we then have a?
I think you weren't there. You just weren't voting yet.
I'll make a motion.
Is that yours? And, and Lamar?
Second.
Okay, second. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay.
So that's a, that's a. That's a five oh two for the motion, right? We got five, five yes, zero no, two abstain.
Two abstention, yeah.
Perfect, thank you. All right.
And, uh, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
Mm-hmm, hi, hi.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anything else for us today, RJ?
Uh, you know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap up.